...posted and placing such notice at the office of the clerk of the public body, or in the case of a public body that has no clerk, at the office of the chief administrator. Reasonable notice other than the circumstances of special emergency or continued meetings shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the public body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Dr. Gabriel, on June 27, 2019, notice was provided fulfilling our criteria of Virginia Code Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. As I mentioned before, Ms. Martin is en route here. She's running a little bit behind due to some circumstances within her neighborhood. And Mr. Clanton is going to join us hopefully before 5:00. So we're going to go ahead and get started. I have, I've excused Dr. Berthong from this portion of the meeting just because we're going to be discussing issues pertinent to the RFP process. What I wanted to start with was first welcoming Ms. Tanner as our interim clerk. Thank you very much. If there's anything that comes up during our process that you have a question about, just signal a hand and we'll take a pause moment.
We'll do.
I put together two documents that kind of combined what Mr. Jordan had shared with us, which, thank you very much, Mr. Jordan, for providing that information. Mr. Jordan, myself, Ms. Basine, we've been through a search process. And Ms. Smith and Ms. Martin and Mr. Clanton, Ms. Campson, you have not. And so I just wanted to kind of start at baseline, just to start with the timeline. Welcome. You just started. Why don't you get settled in? You should have two little sheets of paper where you are. Yep. Okay. So what I did was I put together a timeline as to what brought us to the point of today. And if, if you look at July 17, this is where we are today. And what I'd like to do is to open up the process for discussion on the RFP. And so that's what I have outlined on the second page. What is the RFP process? So before any board goes into discussion about a superintendent search, we have to put forth a request for, some folks have called it a headhunter, a search firm, but we have to put that request out there. And I did a little research in addition to the materials that Mr. Jordan shared, but I asked Ms. Ingram, thank you very much for providing that information, about what the process was like, both for the search that brought Dr. Bentley, Dr. King, and Dr. Boone to Norfolk. And then I also reached out to the Virginia Beach School Board to see what their process was like and how they arrived at Dr. Spence. And so I'm going to share that information with you all today. What this is not, is this is not our board determining what the qualities are in a superintendent that we want to attract. That is going to be a part of that RFP process. The firm that we ultimately hire is going to work with us and the community, all stakeholders involved, in order to bring those qualifiers together to put that information out. So I just don't want us to think that that's what we're here to do today. What we're really here to do today is to assess the information and really understand what it is that we want to put out there to qualify the search firm, okay? This, this whole process, and Mr. Jordan can certainly share his thoughts on this as well, and Ms. Basine, this is, this is going to be a long committed process for us that's going to take extra time and flexibility. So I would just ask everyone to be as flexible as possible, and we'll try to make sure that we accommodate as best as we can. But we are under a timeframe here. We have 180 days before we have to then go to the state if we need to submit some type of an extension. So as I said before, what we have on board docs right now is we have some material that Ms. Tanner has uploaded that goes over the RFP process that Norfolk Public Schools put out for the most recent search for when we landed on the Virginia School Board Association. The other document that's embedded in that is the search process that Virginia Beach went through. So let me give you a little bit of background information first on the Norfolk Public Schools one. The original group that Norfolk Public Schools went with for Dr. Bentley, let's see, my notes. And I did speak with Mr. Cloud earlier, and he's going to interrupt me, but everything that we are discussing right now is appropriate for public discussion. And he's going to grab me if there's something that shouldn't be discussed for public. But the school board at the time when Dr. Bentley was hired, they contracted with a group called Ray and Associates. And they were hired March 23, 2010. They were given a two-year guarantee on their contract. They contracted that group at a rate of four, basically $41,000. When the situation came about with Dr. Bentley leaving the division and Dr. King brought on, because of that two-year guarantee clause, the board stuck with Ray and Associates for Dr. King's, for that search process that brought in Dr. King. So basically, you had two superintendents brought in under the same group for a price of $41,000, okay? Fast forward to April 2015, a process was, an RFP was placed, which ultimately landed with the Virginia School Board Association, which is very economical. That price that the school division paid was $13,000. So you have a price between $13,000 and about $41,000. Virginia Beach went through a process back in 2000, early, I want to say 2005. Let me see here. Yeah. See the date on here? Yes, 2005. When they put their proposal out, their, their range did not exceed, I want to say about $40,000 either. The group that they contracted with, it was very unique. It was very interesting to hear some of their perspective. But that group was very similar to what the VSBA did with, or does with Norfolk Public Schools. So that group was the search firm for the superintendent. They stuck with the board to help in the superintendent evaluation process, the board evaluation process, and they also facilitated training with the board. Because basically, they wanted to ensure that the relationship that they were bringing together was going to be a relationship that could be sustainable. And so they wanted to make sure that they were providing needed, I don't want to say counseling, but needed training in order to, I guess, facilitate that process. So I thought that was really interesting, and we kind of have that with the VSBA. You know, when we went with them to bring Dr. Boone here, and we do contract with them for governance training, they didn't necessarily, you know, do anything with us as far as the evaluation process, but we have worked with them in the past, not with our board in particular, but with an evaluation tool for, for the board. So that's the homework that I have done thus far, and I have put forth some suggestions here, but I wanted to really open it up for discussion to you all to see if there are any desires that you had, any suggestions. And my goal at the end of our time here is to probably bring everyone back next week, if that works for everyone, or at a set time, once everyone has had the opportunity to review these RFPs, and to be able to give the administration direction as to what we would like in the RFP, and let them go from there. Because once we get that kicked off, it's pretty fast after that. So I'll open it up for questions and discussion. Ms. Campson?
Well, not to start the discussion, but could we firm up a date now so I could have it on my calendar? If we're suggesting next week, that's fine with me. I just would like to get it in, if that's what we're going with, if everyone here is okay with that.
Does anybody have a problem with coming in next Wednesday? I put on there possibly at, I'm going to say 5 to 6?
5 to 6, if that's okay with everyone else? I just like to get it on. Okay, thank you. I'll put it in now.
Ms. Martin, was that? We? Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
It's okay for now.
Looks okay. All right.
I have a couple of things. So I know we've been using RFP interchangeably with RFQ. What we did with the last search, the 2015 search, we actually did a request for qualifications, and we received four, four proposals, would have been a fifth, but they applied late. And so the RFQ process was a little different, as I recall. You know, we did advertise it appropriately and put it on the state's electronic system, EVA. And then we received, proposals came in within the timeframe that we set. I think they went to Attorney Cloud, and then I think he and a team reviewed them and sent them as they came in to the board.
I don't remember that, but it may well have happened.
I've got some more emails, so I'll send it to you. And so the RFQ process, it may be...
An RFQ, RFQ is request for quote.
Right.
So so everyone knows, request for quote.
And I would yield to the purchasing and the experts here to discuss, and Mr. Cloud to discuss if there are any significant differences there that we need to be concerned with. The last time we did do an RFQ, and it allowed us to receive the proposals, we did set some, I sent you a copy of it, I'll see if I have it. We did set some high-level expectations of what we were seeking. I mean, it was nothing detailed in terms of qualifications of a superintendent, but at least some criteria that, that we would expect. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention, the, the reason that the VSBA price was different from others was in large measure because of our service benefit as a member of the association. What the, the quotes that we received for the RFQ during the last search ranged from as high as 41 to, well, we had 41 to 32, 5, 26, 9, and then the VSBA quote. So other than that, mildly thing would be, or recommendation would be if, if the RFQ process is something that people are comfortable with, that we would just review it, update it, and then run with it versus trying to...
Yeah. That's... One thing that I want to point out with the Virginia Beach superintendent search is they had an appendix in theirs, and in that appendix, it has in there desirable criteria for the superintendent selection. And so if you all want to just also take a look at that to see if that's something that you want to modify, include, I just, what I'd like for us to do is just take the best out of what we have before us and use that as, as the RFQ, if that's what we want to call. I don't know what the difference is between RFP and RFQ, but if that's what we want to term it.
Well, perhaps Mr. Cloud could explain the difference between the two, so we would...
I'll send you something on it. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure that I can, let's say, but there is a distinction under the procurement law and in your procurement policy.
So...
Just, are you referring to the Fairfax?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You had mentioned Virginia Beach. Yeah, just going back to the point that you made earlier, I think for expediency, it's probably better for us to be as simple as possible rather than getting bogged down and trying to develop too much too soon, so...
So if you go to the sheet that has the red, some of the red on it, item number four, setting a firm timeline on the RFP issue date and a closing date, can we, do you, now, Virginia Beach had a month that they had their timeframe open. We had ours open, I think, 14 days, 15 days, about that time. Do we want to stick with that timeframe between two to three weeks?
We're already quite a pack. Was her last day, was Dr. Boone's last day, the 5th, right?
It was the 5th.
And so today's the 16th?
The 17th.
17. So we've already, in other words, were the times that they had from the last day of their superintendent, and then when we say Virginia Beach was four weeks, was that four weeks from the time?
It's the window that they put out for the RFP.
Oh, to come back?
To, it's just basically, we're going to take applicants for a month.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Thank you.
And what we did with VS, when we put our RFP out was we opened it up for, it was like 14 or 15 days.
Okay. Thank you, I understand now.
I think the clock starts from the time of the vacancy, so it would have been...
Thanks, sir.
But that's, that's different than the opening window.
No, no, I just think the question about...
See, that was my question. That was because I was confusing the two, but Dr. Abel's explained it to me now. So, yeah, I know, because we start from July 5.
Yep.
For the clock, the clock's ticking from then, but I thought that was, but now I see that this is the time we're asking to have the bids back in.
Yeah.
So I say shorter is better than longer.
I'd say a month. A month? Okay.
30 days, yeah.
30 days? 30 days?
I'd say two to a month.
30 days? Two weeks goes by so fast.
Yeah, but aren't we already getting information? Aren't people already contacting us with wanting to...
Yeah, I know, we got at least sufficient time to advertise.
So do we want to use up a whole month on it?
This is a major decision for people. And so I think 30 days is adequate. I, I was fine with 30 days, too, because I'm like...
So are we saying 30 days that people can put a bid in, and then after 30 days, so we're already two weeks out, then 30 days for people to put a bid in, and then we've got to sit down and evaluate those and do the hiring? I mean, so basically, we're going to be two months in before we start doing the search?
Yeah.
That seems like a lot.
Yeah, I think the request for proposal, personally, I'm, I think, two weeks.
That's where I am, too. I'm with Tanya on that.
Well, I would say largely because most of the folks are going to respond, that's their business. And if we don't get, if we don't feel in two weeks we get something satisfactory, then we can extend it another two weeks.
I agree. See, I like this better, because I don't want us to be two months in before we start searching, and we only have six months to do it.
So two weeks, and then can extend if needed?
We did have, not that we would use the same thing, but we developed, as part of that process, a set of criteria. You know, we did the brochure and all of that.
Yes, I have.
And so even if we wanted to just grab from, if we wanted to put some additional preamble in there, you know, we could grab from the, the board's accountability plan and a couple of things, and just add that in there just as a reference point if we feel it's necessary. But I wouldn't recommend we get caught up in too much wordsmithing at this point.
Okay, so would that add to, there's a piece in here that goes into background information? I mean, that would be a part of the background information?
Well, I just mentioned it because you had, had that appendix.
Mm-hmm.
But I think most of the background information would be on the division.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. What our goals are, you know?
Off the accountability plan.
Yeah. Well, I would put the accountability plan as an appendix. I mean, we could do that. That way they would know this is, this is what we, this is what our main thing is. So then, can we, as soon as we close that, that two-week window, meet immediately after that time to review the proposals that we've received, and that will be in a closed session? Okay? So we'll, we'll do that. And then as far as a budget, does anybody have any desire to go above $40,000?
Well, the benefit of the RFQ is we will have, folks will respond, and they will say...
And they'll give us a price.
This is what they can do, and then that gives us a framework for considering the budget at that time. I don't think we have to do that now.
Okay, so we can, I'll just cross that off then. Okay. All right. Okay, and then the last item, number seven, Mr. Jordan was very generous to be the board liaison the last time. I, that is not another hat that I wish to wear at this time. So I was going to ask Ms. Campson if she would be willing to be the liaison during this process to that group, knowing that all information will be shared with the entire board. But Ms. Campson, you would just be making sure that you're the point person, and you would be just gathering us for these dates, times, logistics, basically.
Kind of like a management thing.
Exactly.
Not because the firm we hire will be doing all...
Right, exactly.
And the, and that would kick in once we've hired somebody.
That's right.
Okay.
Right.
And just for clarity, I did that because as part of the proposal that came from VSBA, it was recommended. So I would say we may want to wait and see what the search firms come back and say to us.
Oh, this is just until, for Ms. Campson, just until the search firm is determined?
Selected.
This is, yeah, this is just to have somebody coordinating us with our dates and our times and our meetings. That's all. And then once they get, when they bring us the information, if they want to operate differently, then they can share that with us, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Good? All right? All right, any other questions?
So then we will, because ultimately, the, the administration and the procurement or purchasing department, whoever it is, they'll manage all this.
Yes.
Things will come through them, through some process confidentially to us.
Yes, and actually, Ms. Ingram, if you don't mind, if I might ask you, when, when the board meets next week, then, to refine exactly what we want in this process, sends you the information directly? Is that how, we should do that?
It will go to Carolyn Robinson. Basically, I was texting her. She was saying, once she gets the scope of work as to what needs to go out, we should do that resume in some two days. So as soon as we get that, we get back to her.
So next Wednesday, when we meet, we're going to make the decisions of what we want, and we're going to send that right to Ms. Ingram.
To Carolyn Robinson.
Yeah, Carolyn Robinson. And then it's going to be another seven to 10 days before we actually get it on the street.
Typically, it's on the street. You were talking about how long you want it out on the street. But she says typically it is out on the street seven days.
Oh, so we...
So the two-week time period.
Would give her time, and then that would...
I mean, once she does, we get the scope of work, and everybody's clear to go out, and we're ready to run out for eight, seven days. So that two-week time period is covered there.
So then, so two weeks from July 24, we will have our bids back.
But it will take her one day to get it on the street.
So we're looking like mid-August.
Is that August, is that what it is?
I mean, I don't know, I'm just...
24.
Yeah.
August 7.
Yes.
It's two weeks from that, 24, so she might need a couple more days, so maybe by that Friday, so we could discuss it right, okay? So around that.
So then is our...
This August 10th is a Saturday, I thought we made...
Well, I know, I was pulling that, you know, I didn't look to see what day, week it is.
So then is, is our task to look at the 2015 RFQ and make any suggested modifications to that?
Yes.
Well, I see you have the calendar August 7, for us, that's our 2:00 PM work session, so...
That's just our next board meeting date.
Right.
I put it on here because that's a time that we...
So is it possible that we would have that, Ms. Ingram? Would it be possible to make that August 7 to have those bids? That's... That's exactly two weeks from next week.
Yeah, probably not, it sounds like.
That would just been good if it was, because then we would have to call a special meeting. Okay.
If there's anything else that you all find as you're looking at the RFQ that we've done, or the one with Virginia Beach, just share the information with everyone, share your suggestions, and then that way we can do as much of the work ahead of time before we come in next Wednesday. Okay? So Ms. Tanner, so that we are in complete compliance with meeting notification, can we post that we will be having a board meeting next Wednesday? 5 to 6?
The 2015 RFQ, is that attached to the today's agenda?
It's on board docs.
It's on board docs.
That's right. And, and your handout, that you gave to everyone, is that on board docs?
I have, I have emailed Ms. Tanner, and we can put that up on board docs.
Well, now I just want one.
You can have cards upset, but there you go. Great. So we'll just keep things rolling. Our next item is to go into closed session, so is there a motion to go into closed session?
We're just moving along to that.
I move to go into closed session.
Second.
It's been, Ms. Martin?
Ms. Martin. Second.
Ms. Campson, okay. I didn't get a dinner break tonight. That would be...
That's the gift of July. Okay.
Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for, a discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are consideration of the personnel docket of this date, discussion of the reassignment of specific individuals, discussion of the discipline of a specific individual, and discussion of a FOIA request for personnel information for identified individuals. B, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record pursuant to subsection 2 of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session is consideration of the student support docket, yeah, of this date. A, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation... attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion refer to advice of counsel regarding legal issues related to the personnel and student support matters identified above. Discussion of legal issues related to social media, posting a video to a Norfolk Public Schools site, discussion of an SBD due process case, which is sped, and discussion of a notice to preserve evidence. The subject of this section of the motion concerns the conduct of an interim evaluation of the superintendent. B. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the motion concerns the provision or advice of counsel as needed regarding any legal issues related to the conduct of subsection A of this motion.
I think that last part was maybe from something else.
It was just cut and pasted from what you sent.
Well, mine ended with C on the consultation with legal counsel that referred to the discussion of the sped due process case and discussion of notice to preserve evidence.
Okay.
So that last paragraph should not be part of the motion?
So we strike that?
Yes.
That was the one with the evaluation piece.
I think it's from an earlier one, I don't know how it...
Can you just read the first part of that, just of the last one?
The last paragraph.
To what you're striking?
To what I'm striking? Okay. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of this motion concerns the provision of advice of counsel as needed regarding any legal issues related to the conduct of subsection A of this motion.
Yeah, that's from some earlier, because this motion has three sections, A, B, and C, and you read the C section concerning legal advice prior to the paragraph you're striking.
Okay, so maybe there was a mess up with...
So the last paragraph would be the one discussing consultation with legal counsel that ends with the phrase, discussion of a sped due process case and discussion of a notice to preserve evidence.
Okay.
And without corrections, the motion is ready for a vote.
Is everyone comfortable with the motion that was read by Ms. Tanner, then? Roll call.
Okay. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Not here is Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gager?
Hi. Mr. Cloud, when Mr. Clayton arrives, will we need to do a motion to bring him into closed session?
No, just at the, at the end, the final motion, he can only certify to whatever party is.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. They're going to collect the mics, I'm going to go grab Dr. Burtsong.